This is a market township board work session. Today is Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. It's just 1:00 PM. And this is to discuss the budget for 2026. Would you do a roll call, please, Randy?
Okay, trustee Ketta.
There.
Trustee Layton.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Winslow.
How's that?
Treasurer Rick Hauer.
Here.
Clerk Patari is here and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
The staff present is Manager Cangus, our Finance Director Kim Clark, and our Fire Chief Dan Shanahan.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any public, so that skips a couple of items. As I said, this will be the, we're going to start with the fire and general fund budgets. And of course, since the chief's here, we'll get him out of the way first so he can go do other important things. Hopefully, you've had time to go over the narrative from the chief. Pull that out. All right, you, does anybody have questions or you want to hear from Dan first? Does anybody care? Why don't you give us an overview, Dan, please?
Yeah, just a brief overview. You've seen my narrative and money. And I was, I will just stress that I've been a little conservative and I always have been. We'll start with the revenues. Public Act 33 and the millage for the apparatus. I kept it the same as it is this year anticipating. And at the most, it could, it could increase, what, two and a half percent, if my understanding. Just sticking in revenue. Ambulance, transport fees, again, conservative. But if you look at 2023, you'll see we generated $83,000 in income in revenue, in revenue. But last year, and I can't explain that, why we took in 137. Our run volume was the same as in 2023 and the revenue was up quite a bit. And you can see already this year, we were above anticipated revenues.
Question, Dan?
Yes, anytime, please, yes.
So are we actually, I want to say making money, but we're recovering our costs on these runs, a lot of things?
We're recovering.
I mean, at the end of the year, like when this board was willing to do this, you know, we basically said if we don't, if we make $1 and save lives, that's what we're geared toward. I mean, are we doing that? I mean, are we, are we?
I wish it was that, I wish it was that easy to give you an exact number.
I mean, we're not losing our shorts on it.
No, and if we were to still respond like we were before.
Yeah, we don't get any.
We would be getting no revenue. Don't get me wrong, this is costing us, us money also. But that, that number would be, would take some, some time accounting. We're doing okay with it, but we're not generating income.
Okay, well, I'm just, I just, I just don't want us to lose our shorts on it, you know? That wasn't the...
But all the years that I've been on this board, these last couple of years, we've said as a board that we want to see those numbers. And I thought we were promised that we were going to see those numbers. So in my mind, in my mind, the people that respond on the fire side would have responded even if we didn't have an ambulance. So I would think we could subtract some things and come up because my neighbors are going to ask me about this. And I want to have it point one, two, three, four, five. Here's what we're getting.
Yeah, and we, we can't really. And I was going to ask you to explain and maybe Kim too, or John, definitely. It's not as easy to pull that out because of the crossing over that happens.
Well, I understand.
And you've got revenue against different expenses. So maybe you can explain it better than I.
I'll be, I'll, I'll start. Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of variables. Because right now, and Andy would take, it would take probably a full-time, well, I'm exaggerating there a little bit. It would take a part-time accountant in our office to separate everything out. Well, yeah, we can, we can do generals. Okay, yeah, we do 74% of our calls are EMS. So do we take 74% of the fire pay?
We'll see what I'm saying.
I'm just trying to give you an example.
Okay, all right, and then I'll ask my question.
We can't do that. I mean, it sounds easy, but there's a lot more to it.
But you would do 74% of those calls even if you didn't have EMS because Market General or whoever they are today, LifePoint, would make the run. And you would still, the siren would still go off and you would still go. So I don't think you count it that way. I, I think, I think there's a different way to look at it than that because those people would have went. They went anyways.
Okay, John, maybe just...
So you help it out. Oh, I'm not even turning on.
The expenditures generally are staying the same because the call volumes are the same. The revenue is what's different to the tune of $80,000 plus a year. So without the ambulance, you would, the department would be out $80,000 in revenue each year. That's the difference in a nutshell. Otherwise, you have to kind of pick and choose various lines within the cost centers in his budget. And it's not 100% of every line because, well, let's call it 74% of their time, the full-time staff time, which is probably not true because they don't respond to every call. They have paid-on-call EMTs that respond to some of them too. So there's the challenge, right? How do you figure out what percentage of every line item in each cost center is directly attributable, attributable to EMS only? And how much of that is different than it would have been if we didn't have an ambulance? So the, the easy thing is to look at the revenue difference, $80,000 a year. So it's helping subsidize that fund.
We also talked about at one point way back in the beginning of splitting the ambulance out. And then you have almost more breakdowns that have to happen because fire is subsidizing. And that's not a really good word to use. But because you're using the same people on the same calls, they'd have to stop and do what they were doing and say, okay, I'm switching over to here. You know, it's not as easy as maybe Public Works when they go and do a job or a task or repair something. It, it's too intermingled and you don't have two separate distinct staffs with separate income and expenses.
So I just heard that we are $80,000 more than we maybe would have if we didn't have the ambulance. Because people would still respond.
Revenue, not income, revenue, correct.
Okay, so, I mean, that's what, that's what I need to share with the residents. That's what we all need to share with the residents.
Yeah, and that's the thing. I don't care, I just, I just want it to be kind of a break even proposition. If we can do that, and I think we are accomplishing that goal, so. And the residents love our service here. So I mean, I, I don't think we can't pull that away, especially.
Not at this point, no.
John?
The primary sources of revenue in the fire budget are Act 33 and the equipment millage. That's it. Anything else beyond that is sort of, I don't want to say gravy because that's oversimplifying it and it's definitely not gravy. It gives the township and specifically the department flexibility to do things that you can't do with Act 33, specifically Act 33. Act 33, you have to spend every dime you take in each year. And that's why they were making additional mortgage payments, principal payments on, on their building for years until recently. The Act 33 money is being spent first. And at the end of the year, whatever's left in there, as long as we spent all of the Act 33 money, they don't have to spend it done on that principal payment. And now that it's been refinanced, so there's no balloon at the end to worry about, it actually helps them in two ways. One, they don't have to worry about the balloon payment anymore because in 10 years, the mortgage payment or the bond payment goes away. But two, they're allowed to keep a fund balance that they couldn't keep with just Act 33 money that allows them to pick off some of those middle-of-the-road expenditures. And they have a lot of those. Bunker gear, their masks, their tanks, all these, they seem like little, but they're very expensive. And without a fund balance, they can't do a lot of that. Then they have to rely on grants.
That are going away.
And the grants are just so, you can't depend on it. And townships in particular can't depend on grants anymore. Over half the population in the state, but the least eligible to get state funding on anything.
So that's a very long answer to your question.
Well, I know, but, but, but we all got some data out of this, okay? From the perspective of, we have an $80,000 revenue increase because of this. And people would have went to that.
Oh, yeah, and that's what I tried to explain.
They go anyway, so, you know, really, it doesn't, that doesn't even account.
That number goes away if the ambulance goes away. That's the easy truth.
Correct, correct.
And those two extra advantages go away too, that you just said.
Well, yeah, there's no flexibility with the budget anymore short of 500 bucks in contributions, 3,500 in charges, 700 in local community stabilization. You're, you're talking maybe 10 grand. That doesn't get you anywhere. Three sets of bunker gear these days?
Yeah, maybe two today, today.
Two. Two sets of bunker gear, Dan. This, your full department is around 30?
Total 33.
It'd take them 15 years to change over their bunker gear at that schedule. And that's just not realistic.
So this is more information than we've gotten in the past. So it's information we can share when the community asks us. And they will ask because there's always people who are not using the ambulance service that think it's wasteful. And once you use it, the people who've used it think then it's the most wonderful thing.
Changes the minds, thoughts are right.
Well, I think too, my, my point will be is $80,000, we had to respond anyway. So if we're not getting that money back for revenues, that's, that's an additional revenue we're getting. And I think the service, it's hard to, I think it's break, you know, it could be break even, even if we're making a little bit, that's fine.
I would suggest if anything, it's losing a little bit. If you're not truly add up line-by-line accounting of it on an annual basis. But it's really hard because every minute of their day can't be broken up between firefighting and EMT.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I think, like I said, I think it's break even. It might be losing a little bit, but the residents would be happy with that. They like that service.
Once they need it, they love it.
Yeah, they love it.
Okay.
And I think Lynden, or Lynden, when those people that don't think it's necessary, if they need that service, they're going to really appreciate that there.
Oh, yeah, right, then you'll get a donation maybe. No, I just think we all need to be on the same page with it, with our information coming from our department, not making up information as we go.
I think that's a pretty easy explanation.
Yep, thank you.
And that's a conservative number too.
Of course, Dan, we know that.
So do you suppose last year might be because there were more out-of-t township calls and we had more revenue? Maybe that's a Kim question too.
It could just be, I mean, it's all based off of the end, end of the month reports that we get from our biller. So we could have just had a year where more people paid. Sometimes you get a lot of people that are homeless or things like that, don't have insurance.
Yeah, less Medicaid or something, okay.
There's also the chance that a heavy billing month in a prior year gets collected a year later, which would be that big bump you see in '24 from '23. Where some of that service is provided in the prior year, but it's entered in, in the month that it's received.
Correct.
Because we're, I believe currently doing that on a fiscal year?
Yes.
And we weren't bef, we weren't before.
You weren't?
Or, I don't know.
La la la.
Well, yeah, the, the services, the, the service was done on December 31st and you didn't get paid till April 2nd. What years did that go in, I guess, is what I'm saying?
Oh, we do, yes. It still goes in the current year as revenue, but it gets booked to a different account because at the end of the year, we make a journal entry to put anything that's not paid at the end of the year into a different account. So when you post that, when we pay is what you're thinking of. So when we pay for, pay to the city or we pay to UP Health Systems for ambulance intercept fees, those would get posted to that account where the outstanding ones were at, if that makes sense. But the revenues are considered revenues in the current fiscal year.
That's good to know.
That's what I have, the revenues, what we see, I see anyway, I should say.
Okay, can you keep going or do you know where you were?
Yeah, that's always, that one might be, well, we're not completely done with that one. But yeah, like I said, we will, we should have a better understanding after this year on where the revenues will be for the ambulance. And we did receive, you know, the other revenue, I looked at that and that's an unusual one too for us. But we did receive a grant from MMRM. And we received a refund from, maybe that was under reimbursements, excuse me, from $5,000 from Red Power for the lettering on the EMS, which they didn't do. I know I even put in my memo, I believe, that I want, we would like to start cleaning up the outside of the building, garage door repairs, painting, fix up the front area of it with some fertilizer, maybe some topsoil, stuff like that. And that's why those, those increases are a little bit larger than they have been in the past. And I believe even just under administration, cut back on travel a little bit just because the only reason that is for admin, education, traveling conference. I know I'm jumping around here, but 337, 850, excuse me, 860. We cut it back, oh, almost $3,500 just because we have not been using it. I always like to budget there, but we haven't been using it. And we're going to put it in other places next year, in a nutshell. But staffing will be a concern. And I, I guess we'll see if you have any questions first on anything. If you want to go light item or cost center by cost center with questions. Mine's pretty basic and simple.
My concern's the staffing. So I'll, I'll wait. My concern's the staffing, if anybody's got any other questions.
Everything's pretty consistent with the previous years, just a few bumps. And compared to maybe other budgets, you know, like the $6,000 in probably, in the total cost center, I guess, we only budgeted $7,000, $8,000 more than previous year, so. But it's, it's time to start getting some things done at the biller. We're going to relamp the interior of the garage. We went away from the T8s fluorescents. We have to go to the LEDs. That's going to be, it's going to be a little bit expensive.
If I may, there's one other slight change from prior years. Historically, the net effect in the fire fund has been the exact number of the anticipated millage revenue for equipment. This year, that, that number is shown in capital vehicles. And there's, I don't believe in intention of spending it because we're now saving for a ladder truck. So that'll roll into the fund balance at the end of 2026. The equipment millage fund balance. So then the net effect becomes zero instead of that same number that's shown in 206, 903, 970, 340.
So we had talked a whole bunch of years ago, before most of you guys were even here, about earmarking. And because you brought that up, putting money, it, it was a big, long discussion that a different board member brought up. But the idea was, okay, we're putting $15,000 a year for the police vehicle and we're going to put so much for your equipment and stuff. How do we know that other than you know it? Because the discussion came up, what if we want to spend or somebody wants to spend of that $192,000? They want to put buy all-new bunker gear or whatever and spend $40,000 of it? Do you know what I'm saying?
You can't.
Okay, that's, that's what I want to, okay. Well, and maybe that's a bad example, using the equipment fund because that's different. But it's the earmarking part, you know, when you talk about putting it, putting it in the fund balance. How do we identify what those numbers are?
I can also add to that if you don't mind. I think the expectation was every penny that we have sitting in the bank is earmarked for something. That's the feeling I got when those discussions were happening six years ago. That's not what actually happens. And if it did, clone Kim today. Because there's no way you can account for every single penny, every single day. You have to assume that there's a rainy day fund. That's, I think this board's policy currently is four months. But that's just rainy day fund. What other monies do you have set aside? We have $150,000 set aside for Forestville Road. There's probably approaching $45,000 in the sheriff's vehicle fund. There's a couple of other ones out there. I don't have them off, off the top of my head, but some of those show up in the monthly financial statements if you, if you read those. I guess my point is, while I understand the concept of saying, we need all this money because it's for X, Y, Z, A, B, C, all these other things, it's a fund balance for a reason. Things change. You might be planning on it being for something, but you can't say that will be the only thing that's ever used for because then, then you have a lot more money sitting in the bank that you truly didn't need. My opinion is, if we have six to 12 months sitting in the bank, we're doing better than most places. But we also have relatively small budgets compared to the potential costs we could have with one big emergency. So millions of dollars sound like big numbers to those of us that live on five- to six-figure budgets on an annual basis. But they're not very big if you look at the cost of replacing the water system in Trowbridge Park. I mean, 10 million in the bank isn't going to do it. We're looking at an $8 million booster station upgrade and we can't pay cash. Some people think we have too much money in our water fund, not even close. So that's what you have to keep in mind on this stuff. And, and I don't know of any municipality where I've worked where all of the funds and the fund balances and reserves are earmarked specifically for X, Y, Z and all that. Yeah, you can have these pockets of money that you committed to that we should keep track of. I think that's a good idea.
That's really all I was asking.
Okay, well, I just wanted to get that clear because I know there was a challenge on that six years ago when we talked about it. And I don't know if...
Even more than that.
I, yeah, but it was still happening. So anyway, maybe some clarity on that. And maybe there's a way we can get even a little bit better at it than we currently are. But I just wanted to caution you not to get too critical on that because Kim doesn't have enough time in the day.
Yeah, and some of that came up from overspending in, in some of the accounts. And then we were stuck. So it kind of snowballed. The board just didn't know where the money was going. And that's, I don't know, go ahead, Dan.
John, if you're earmarking X $100 for a ladder truck for X amount of years, how many years are you anticipating that will take to have enough money? Because we're looking at five years out after. Does this have to, would that have to be paid in full before it's ordered?
Would not have to be. And actually, there's a meeting tomorrow, Pierce is coming up. Well, that's one, and we'll be looking at many vendors, or a few. He's coming up tomorrow morning at 9:00, which I'm trying to reschedule. But yes, it does not have to be paid up all upfront. And at our current rate of 192-ish this year, a, a year, you can do the math, you know, 10 years gets you quite a bit, so.
Yeah, I just, because I, I know they're looking at five years out.
I know. And it, it can vary because we are, we're talking about more of a spec truck, just right off the line, you know, nothing the market township needs for the ladder. I think it's more of just a general ladder truck is what we need. So that will speed up the time. The only thing that's going to really slow it down, it's sort of funny, but not, is the color.
I knew you were going to say that.
If it was red, it would cut six months off the time.
Omaha boarding.
It's not funny, but it, it...
So what are you anticipating then for earmarking this money and when we could possibly start looking at specs?
We are looking tomorrow, tomorrow morning's our first meeting.
Okay.
We've been talking about it off and on for about a year and looking at various vendors. But tomorrow morning's our first meeting with Pierce. And we hope to, you know, use Swiftin and E1 and a few others too and just see what they have. And currently, we roughly have 362. It's sort of a between or not.
Joke.
A joke, but we have 360 in the apparatus fund currently-ish. I mean, there's a little more. So that's where we're at today. And then roughly 100, we're, we're putting in 192-ish a year. At the, you know, it could vary a little bit, higher too.
So as far as purchasing goes with that five-year lead time, it's very possible that you could be considering a bond issue to fund it upfront. And then the equipment millage is the revenue that pays back the debt. That's an entirely reasonable way to fund a purchase of that size because he doesn't have two to five million bucks sitting in the bank, right? I mean, they were making $80,000 principal payments on their mortgage for a decade. Well, that would have been nice to have now, but it was Act 33 money and the losses you can't. So we still have to follow the law on that too. And that's why having the ambulance revenue helps them take care of some of the other things that they otherwise wouldn't be able to.
So are you expecting maybe half down or a third or?
Yeah, it would be nice to have half. And then you can't, they, obviously, they offer financing too. And we'd have to send it to a finance person, that, you know, well, I know, but you want, you know, a broker or something to look at all the wording and that. But they do have very good rates. And then you don't, you know, you can borrow the money from them or pay as much as you do. And like previously, we had a $40,000, don't call me, $50,000 discount on the previous truck, but we wouldn't get that this time because we didn't have the money down. So you would pay upfront, you are collecting that interest.
I know, I'm going out, the same subject about a little bit. Are you looking at a ladder of what length, 75, 100? Okay.
Yep, and we're looking at...
With a man basket?
In a basket, yeah.
And, and that's to service who?
Pardon me?
Who does that, why, why do we need that?
Actually, even in Trowbridge, it's your businesses, your businesses mostly. But even for a home, a two-story home, our current ladder...
Too small.
It's, it's just too short. We can't, even in the businesses, the distance we need to park away from the business in case it collapsed, we can't, the stick won't even...
So how high can a business grow? I mean, I'm sure we have stipulations as to the height of businesses.
Four stories.
We do, it's fourth, correct.
Based on what equipment we have.
Correct, and it's really, yeah, correct. But yeah, it really, and it's a lot safer too for the guys, that ladder.
I was hoping you were going to say 100 foot, you know.
That's exactly what we're looking at.
I turned it at 75, so you have a little out there.
Yep.
But, yeah.
And it's a 70, yeah.
Definitely needed.
100-foot ascended, a single axle.
They can do that on single.
They can do that today, yes.
No kidding?
Yep.
Okay.
So it's, yeah, that's, that's the first one we're looking at. That's tomorrow morning. Not, the truck won't be here, but that's what we're specking tomorrow morning. It'll just be an off-the-line, no bells, nothing. Orange, hopefully orange and gray, but we'll see. We'll see, the guy said we could wrap it.
So would it kill us to get a, a red one?
Pardon me?
Would it kill us to get a red one?
I know, that's, I know.
I mean, I like the orange too to distinguish, but if it's going to be cheaper and faster.
And I don't know about the cost so much, and we'll find out tomorrow. Because I, we have a list, obviously a list of questions. I don't know about the, I know the time. I think you're, I believe he said, this was a while ago, about six months more for a different color.
Okay, oh, that's not really very long.
Buy it red, red.
It's not, we're right then.
No, no, it's not very long.
Not for a 30-year truck, it's not.
Yeah.
No. If you order the spec truck.
And if they're on time.
That's strictly the color.
You know, there's tons of ifs.
Right. But.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then we'd look like the city.
Aren't they yellow?
Red ones, yellow ones, white ones.
We're over there all the time anyway.
Yeah, yeah, we are.
The ambulances are over there.
It is.
But, you know, once or twice or three times a day. I mean, it's pretty frequent.
It's been, yeah. We're a service to the, that EMS is a service to the, the county. It is.
For sure.
But that's okay because we're here for the, I mean, we're part of this county and.
Oh, definitely.
And I, I mean, I.
That's what we signed up for.
Nothing wrong with that.
No, I didn't, I'm not, I, I don't, I hope you respect me.
So I was, um, are, are you down?
Yeah, no, he was kind of in the middle of his.
I was curious about the, um, veterans facility and how many runs the city has attributed to the VA annually.
You wanna jump right into staffing or?
That's two hundred.
They, they say there's two hundred runs from the VA a year.
That's, yeah.
Wow.
EMS goes to the VA two hundred times a year.
Wow, that's a lot.
And we ran those numbers two years ago when they talked about it.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we, yeah, we've.
It's still the same.
Yep.
And they're gonna have the same number of quote occupants in the new facility. And they pay. They do pay.
They don't pay taxes.
I know they don't. Mm-hmm. We don't, yeah.
So what are you kicking around? I mean, we've talked about this numerous times. I know you have with John too, like adding more people.
We are going to have to.
Yeah.
We, we will have to.
Different shifts.
Pardon me?
Different shifts.
Yep. Yep.
Where are we going? What's, what's the consensus or do you not even have that arrow yet?
I guess we, I guess we don't, you know, I guess I'd, I'd like to sit down maybe with a cou, I don't know how that works with the board, maybe a couple of you first. And it's, and not that I don't wanna be open with everybody, but I just don't want, I don't wanna scare anybody either.
Dan, we're growing.
Yeah.
We're growing.
We need to know.
We have to anticipate.
It doesn't matter.
We have to anticipate increased staffing.
Right, and we, we definitely are gonna have to. And we're not, I guess, since we're on staffing, our, our, one of our problems is we used to all, and I know I've said this, sure, you know, to a few of you, um, we used to be Trowbridge, if you didn't live in Trowbridge Park, you didn't get out of the fire department. Then we expanded to McClellan, then to Lincoln, now we're well into the city. We're hard, we, we have zero EMTs, EMS people that live in Trowbridge Park today. Our response time used to be four to five minutes out the door. We're pushing now closer to seven to nine minutes to get out the door. It's almost doubled because we have nobody local that is in the EMS anymore. And that's getting farther. We're, and we're hiring NMU students and they've been great. Don't, we never used to. Uh, don't get me wrong, it's been a blessing. Um, we're getting farther and farther away. Those students are becoming a bigger and bigger part of our EMS organization part. And I don't foresee that, and the turnover is gonna be there too with them. We are gonna have to do something because our response time is getting too, is just getting too slow getting out the door.
Is that because of housing?
Oh, it's definitely because of housing.
So housing is a huge issue as to why people aren't living in the country.
And those people aren't coming here and some that we did have here that have been on the department for of quite a few years, many, many years, ten or so, between five and ten, actually between five and fifteen, um, have left because of that. They can make a nice little chunk out of their house here and they moved a little farther out. You know, it's less expect, you know, less expensive housing and they made that money. We probably have five in the last two years, but experienced, experienced people that left because they can get so much for their house here and they moved to, you know, another township or a little bit farther out. So it's definitely a concern, like, and I talked with Sagatuck Fire, a little bit different. They're much more financially, they have a lot more money. But they're the same issue. The average house in Sagatuck Township in that area is eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And they're sort of, they were sort of like us, they've expanded now, but nobody could live there. Nobody. So they, they had to recruit all these people from cities and cities away, but they're, they're not gonna get the part-time people to do that. You know, for, you can't do on-call with that. You're not gonna get part-time and that's where we're headed. I think we're almost, we're there. Well, those people are gone. The people that do come in and do live, come into Trowbridge Park, they're working to, to afford a house, they're both working full-time. If they do have kids of that, at that, that younger age, they're too busy. I mean, we just, you're right, housing is a big, big problem. This is a reason, big reason of it.
So do we need to, instead of having a staff of thirty-three available, do we need to have like twenty with six full-timers or shift, shift that?
That's, that's something where we gotta go towards that. I don't have the.
Cause then you're, I'm talking gear and, and equipment and everything else. If you, you're trying to staff thirty-three versus twenty and you take, you know, I don't know if you can sell your gear off or I'm just thinking of changing the money.
That wasn't, you're not gonna make anything on used gear.
You won't get twenty people.
Okay, but then you won't have to buy it either going forward.
You won't get twenty people.
No, you won't. You, yeah, you, that won't. And you're still gonna need those. Um, those, you're still gonna need those thirty-three, well, actually there's three of us, those thirty people. Currently we have twenty-nine that are firefighters. Um, we have twelve EMTs and four strictly EMTs. So we have a roster of thirty-three. Right now, I mean, you talk just the shifts alone, you're talking shift, sixteen shifts, that's every EMT, every EMT taking at least a shift and a half a month. As being on-call and a shift. Um, how much do they wanna work? Now plus, that's just, that's just a Saturday, Sunday you're covering there. We still have, you know, Sunday, well, if you will, Sunday through Thursday, it's a Friday, Monday through Sunday. So. We're gonna, we're gonna have to do something soon, but I'd rather, and please don't anybody take this the wrong way. I'd rather talk with, you know, like a John and, you know, maybe you, or, you know, and maybe somebody else too. This is where we're at. These are the numbers. I just don't wanna, anybody go, oh, is it this bad? You know, either. Cause it's not, we're, we're making it, but I think we definitely need to.
You're getting burned out, Dan. Say it out loud.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, that's, that's an obvious. I think everybody knows that. Everybody in the county knows we are, cause they call and say, I don't know how you guys do it. I don't know how you guys do it. Um, we're not anymore.
Do you have, and you don't have to share it today, but do you have what you want to do, what you think you are?
Ideally, but I'd rather, I really would rather talk to somebody else first. We have talked at our station about this. Um, the exact numbers we don't, we, I don't have. I'd rather have a conversation first so I can say publicly. You know, this, I am confident with this and have somebody else say, yeah, that makes sense or, you know, you're not thinking. You know, that's not gonna work. I'd rather have a little bit of, before I come out with too much, I'd like to hire twenty full-time people.
Right.
Let's have a full-time, you know what I'm saying? Now, I really go, you know, I don't want, I don't want that either, but we do need to hire some.
But you are gonna have, add two hundred calls and your, what's your call volume now per year?
Almost seven hundred.
So two hundred more is gonna bring it to nine hundred. That's a third more calls, a third more calls. So your staffing needs to increase by a third more. And however that looks, I, I don't know.
We're not making it, yeah. And you're right, Lynn, and I appreciate that, but we're not making it now.
Oh, right, yeah.
So you don't say, okay, but I appreciate that, but I just wanna let you know.
Hook it up to a half for sure.
Right.
And then are you at full-time for another crew?
And you know, it's weekends, it's nights. I mean, it's the whole gamut and if you don't, I'll be the bear of bad news. If you don't pay more, people aren't coming.
Yep.
That's just, that's just it. I mean, you know, I can go.
Yeah.
I can go to Saginaw and make more money running.
And that's our, that's our issue too. A lot of, it's, it's another issue. Cause everybody's, EMTs are in demand. I guess so is our first responders. They can go work guaranteed shift at the hospital. Then instead of being on-call and might have, might get a chance to do a call with us. The hospital's taking these, you know, taking the people and saying, yep, I'll give you a twelve-hour shift. Well, if you come work with us, you might get called, you might not, you know.
Plus the pool is smaller too. The pool of people available is smaller.
Thank you. Yes, exactly.
How often do you go where you can't get somebody on a, on a weekend?
A weekend?
To fill a shift.
We've, we've, we're better right now, but we are losing, um, two people very soon. Northern students. They're gonna graduate.
That are taking those shifts on a weekend.
Taking those shifts, yeah.
So that's not gonna change even if you have additional staffing because three more people, I can't see how you're gonna run seven days a week.
Right.
You know, it's, it's, the numbers aren't there for bad either.
We're trying to recruit, we're even doing Snapchat, is it? What's the new one? What, what I kinda talk to you about?
You're not allowed to use Snapchat, don't you?
What's, what's the other? Instagram, thank you. I don't do either one, so.
I don't know those either.
Yeah. I, that's the thing. I was at a conference and they said, if you guys aren't on Instagram, you lose it out, so.
That's where all the young kids are.
That's where the young people are.
So with those two, this is kind of superfluous probably, be willing to work full-time? Are, are they leaving because they're graduating and they can't, and they can't have a full-time job?
No, not, not these particular two.
Okay.
We lost one last summer, this past summer in Ju, July. Um, he might have stuck around. He's, I guess he's, he graduated Northern in accounting, but he's pursuing a fire EMS, um, career. So.
What do you think your deadline is to have these people in place? Because, I mean, we don't know exactly how fast the building will go up. I'm guessing next year. John knows? Go ahead.
I think we need a committee of the board, two or three of you, myself and the chief. And we bring this stuff back to the board and it can happen pretty quick. I mean, once, well, Kim's gonna have to be involved in it no matter what, so it's a matter of if she's on the committee or not.
Sure, she'd be there.
She's gonna say no money, but.
Right.
We're gonna have to tell her how, how do we find this money or you're gonna have to consider Act thirty-three. Dan's gonna have to make cuts elsewhere in his budget. He alluded to that, but I don't know if it was for this reason. Um, they've got lots of needs. It's not cheap running a first responder unit like we have, period. So anyway, I, that would be my recommendation. Set up a, a subcommittee to discuss both the staffing issue and eventually the ladder truck. Come back and it might be a relatively easy decision for you as a whole. Because there's only so many options out there for staffing.
I think part of their staffing, they need somebody to do admin things. If they, they get pretty behind on their, on their stuff and.
Just not enough hours in the day.
I mean, even if it's like a part, yeah. If that's something that should be looked at too.
Yeah, we talked about that quite a few years ago.
I know, I know.
Especially if you have two hundred more calls to your volume.
The manager's recommendation does sound good because we have to deal with this before the new home opens.
Yeah, sooner rather than later. That, that's a part of it, but we're struggling. Right now, we're struggling.
Yeah.
It looks like next year, twenty twenty-six, you know, early, like we're gonna do some other things. Maybe that's a time to sit down and start talking about what we should do.
That's not to say.
I'd like to talk if we could, sooner if possible.
Yeah, I wouldn't wait two more months.
Yeah, I think we need to.
Well, put it on the next agenda then and set up a committee to go then, see.
All we can do at here.
No, not here.
No, because we can't do motions.
You could get volunteers and if there's a consensus, not hold it up.
Yeah, you could do that, yeah.
And it's nothing, again, I'm not trying to be proud, you know, of course everything's public, but you know, I just wanna say, oh, we need twenty.
But if you're doing it in a motion thing, then at least we give that committee a charge and things so they don't wander off into the.
I don't think Dan wants to be called crazy in a public meeting.
My hope would be that you have, um, someone from the paid-on-call, um, group, um, in this meeting as well. They, um, they're.
That'll be harder because they all work day jobs.
Well, they don't all work day jobs and there's no reason why you can't have a evening meeting.
Oh, definitely.
I, I mean, you know, I think you'd have to, you have to look at who you're gonna impact here.
Oh, I do, I believe that's, I definitely do. It's not just, yeah, I definitely do.
You don't want them all to resign tomorrow.
Right. Oh, I, I didn't, wouldn't anticipate that, but.
Yeah. So anyways, I, I think that's a good idea to get people together, um, you know.
But as far as your budget, I don't have anything other concerns with your budget. It's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, yes, it is.
We love you conservative and then we always end up with money in the end, so good job.
So are you thinking any need to increase the Act thirty-three for the next?
That's where, that's why I'd like, if possible, like to have this. I think we're gonna have to.
Besides that, is, is there any urgency that you need to do this for like the next election or anything?
Well, Act thirty-three, we can move up on our own, but if they want an additional millage, they'd have to go to.
Yeah, I would think it would have to be public Act thirty-three.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
And it's not maxed out currently and I don't think there should be any rush to max it out.
No.
But there should be a reasonable public discourse about the need to increase it and not just pin the tail on a single donkey because it's not just Michigan veteran homes that's justifying this. They're already there. Um, that's gonna put them over the edge.
Well, I think how you sell this to the public is you do like the, the road millage. You put all the numbers together. You show your staffing. You show what we're doing, because a lot of it's just information that the residents don't have. And a lot of them don't know what's going on. They just, all they know is the ambulance shows up at their house or.
Right.
And I think we have a couple informational meetings. Maybe that would help get that information out.
Once you determine what the course of action is.
Yep.
Well, and we have a housing development that I would think within the next couple of years, they'll have forty-five new families.
Hopefully some new, um, paid-on-call people.
Right, yeah. And, and you know, that avenue for workforce housing to live within the community. I, I do know in other parts of the country that, um, there is housing set aside for certain professions by our men, teachers and, um, and such. So, you know, nursing, there are, there are care providers. So who knows, something will, something good will come.
Company housing.
I can look at, I mean, I, I know where they do it, so.
And that's something that some areas do that. It's with college students and they give them housing at their, at their fire station.
What does Bell do with their EMTs? Twenty-four hour shifts and they provide them face-on-site to sleep. That's a possibility too, but it comes with a cost also.
And that's, that's the, yeah.
It is worth looking. Sagatuck did that. I mean, cause we're gonna be jumping from two, we right now are averaging two calls per shift or per day.
It's per day.
Per day. And we'll be bumping up to almost two and a half once the vet facilities here.
And it doesn't sound like, it's, it, it, it doesn't, you know.
But I mean, your chances of sitting a shift down and not getting a call is getting slimmer and slimmer.
It is. Yep.
So it's.
And then the paperwork doesn't get done.
Paperwork doesn't get done. I try, I mean, there's, there's so many other things that we do in the course of a day. And we lost our, our mechanics at, um, Marquette City. Yeah, that's quite a while. It's been four or five months now.
The mechanics you had working?
Yeah, we were under, you know, we, they were do, they were doing all of our apparatus repairs.
In the city?
Marquette City was.
Did he leave?
No, um, just been some issues over there. And they're not allowed to work on our, our equipment anymore.
So you don't have that agreement anymore to be able to bring your equipment there?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly how. It's, I think it's union stuff. It's over my head. Um, but they can't work on our, they can't work on our equipment right now. And they haven't been able to for a while. So all those things that we try and diagnose first. And, um, this, they've been helpful, but we try and take care of ourselves and then, cause it's a week or two out before we get somebody to come up here to repair it. So do somebody to repair us.
Could he do anything when he's not working?
I don't know.
Just a thought.
I don't. Not yet. I was, yeah. Well, I mean, that's just. There's a lot of, a lot of things that get done. There's a lot of, lot of things that get done throughout the day, even just personnel, admin duties. When you have thirty-three and they're part-time, they're not there, I mean, it's coordinating and there's, there's a lot of, there's more to it than, you know, it's changed, now we have an EMS agency too.
I don't envy.
Whether you're just a fire a- agency, it makes it so much easier, now that we're an EMS agency, it's changed a hundred percent.
I don't envy your position at all.
That's right, yeah, ask anybody, I know they go, no.
But it's all changing, and so the fire is changing as well, the state's regulations, the federal regulations, all that's gonna just make it more complicated, and more education, more training. So I can, I, I, I think an administrative clerical support person, that, that might be an idea, but I guess we should move on, right? Well, I know, I know, sometimes the early, um, billing would, and getting money and sooner would pay for that.
If the revenue increased, yes.
We're working on some things, too, we, we've recently tried to make some adjustments over there and streamline things and, okay, no, we're gonna forget about that for now. Well, we, we have to, and that's where we're at. So I'm hoping some of those things, like the billing, and it's not on all us, we have an outside, we have a vendor that does our billing, but if we don't get the reports to them, that doesn't get out. A lot of variables, I guess, but we do try.
We haven't even touched on the storage building yet either.
That's not, that's not in my.
It's in your CIP?
It's in my CIP, but I didn't know we were talking CIP, no, that's fine.
I figured you had it in the general fund, but whatever, it's all one big pot anyway.
It is, it's not our, it's not.
Strictly fire.
It's not, it's not a fire department building, it's, um, the township building. It's up with, it's neat and desirable, very desirable, but don't know how that's gonna happen for a while. And, oh, I know we were talking about reserve funds earlier, I wanted to bring up this quite a little bit ago. We can't earmark any funds except for the apparatus strictly, because everything else has to be spent except for the ambulance revenue, which we try and spend. We have, like, that, the fire holes, we buy so much a year, we've been, I know we put in the CIP twenty-five thousand, we're gonna spend, you know, eight thousand this year, we bought a TICs that we needed, uh, kit, cameras, turbo imaging cameras. That leftover money does get spent. But we can't earmark it, because we technically shouldn't really have it, we shouldn't have anything, if, if that makes sense. Does that make sense?
More questions? Do we wanna talk about the storage then, since he's here? Because.
We can, how long do you wanna stay?
Anyway, well, I mean, we're gonna, that rolls into general fund, too.
Well, it's listed as the lowest priority on our bond-funded projects for twenty twenty-six, okay? First priority being Cox Booster Station, second being Northwoods Booster Station, third being the storage building. And hopefully this year, the partial acquisition of the water treatment plant and pertinences, which includes sixteen percent of the Lincoln Booster Station in the city and the two pipes that make their way to the township. Do we need to do it? No. Can we argue that eliminating the storage units we're renting will pay for it over time? Yeah, but if you do the math, twenty-five hundred bucks a year in savings on storage units is gonna take a long time on a building that will cost one to two million. So they have equipment that doesn't fit in, that, all of their equipment will never fit in their building all at the same time. When the Northwoods Booster Station gets updated next year, one of their critical parking spaces goes away, because the header on that booster station will take up half the parking space and you can't just park half of a fire truck in there. So that reality is coming no matter what, it's just a matter of when. Um, and we've talked about it probably as long as I've been here, I think it's been on the list of priority goals. So I think we can have further discussions of that as the water system improvements progress, because it's sort of that tag on that by default, because the water system improvements are not improvements on our storage space. So, uh, it's gonna do the same thing at Cox. Um, some of the space over there that's being used as, call it a shop, will now have to be taken up by a new header system, a wall has to come up, that kind of thing. So we gotta make up that space somewhere, but it, it wouldn't make sense to put it over there. Makes sense to add on to the building over here, if, if we can do it on the bedrock, so. I wouldn't say it's an urgent discussion yet, but everyone needs to be thinking about how big of a priority that really is. Um, if we don't make up that lost space somewhere else, we're going to be doing a lot of shuffling, squeezing. It'll be back to the days of being across the highway when vehicles get parked outside overnight. Um, and possibly fire equipment taking up space at the public works garage and their vehicles have to sit outside. Now you got this kind of thing. Um, when they finally have a facility big enough for their needs, right? I don't think anyone wants to do that to another department, but if that becomes reality, unfortunately, it's what we have to tell some people and that has impacts. So.
And we're thinking a million, a million and a half somewhere, or something over there?
Give me a dartboard, I'll, I'll try to get a dart to stick and it could be, it might be right. We haven't had any preliminary engineering or architectural numbers thrown at it. We started with a budget at a half a million, this was several years ago. I think everyone knows what's happened, cost per square foot of construction these days, two fifty a square foot on a workforce housing unit. It wasn't that long ago, three hundred a square foot for commercial was realistic. Um, and maybe I say that a little loosely, because time kind of flies, but, um, a million to two million is what I would say. Especially since it's gonna have to blend in with the neighborhood, so brick veneer probably.
So there's room on the back of that property, or are we looking at expanding, trying to find more property behind you?
I'm trying really hard not to think about buying more of that property, especially since the whole thing is on the market. But I don't wanna regret that decision, because having a little bit more space over there would go a long way. So that's another part of the equation. There's too many big things happening right now to give you a good answer on all of them. There's no way I can do that without putting the township on the hook for fifteen million today. I, I can't do that, because we don't need a full room over things that are just hypothetical.
That's what Dan's trying to say, to have some small group talk about it before it's presented.
Yeah, but that's not gonna give us a, a good budget, because we need a consultant to give us a preliminary number. We're not building experts. Maybe a contractor could, too, I mean, we've had a pretty good relationship with, um, Bromley, uh, I think, I'm sure he can give us a budget number. Um, but there's only so many times we can go to that well and ask him to give us stuff for free. Eventually, you gotta get paid.
Do we have a, a rough drawing, schematics, or an idea, nothing?
We don't have any preliminary engineering or architecture.
So we have to start from there.
We have a two thousand square foot, two-story building.
And I don't think the price is gonna go down by next year either, or the year after. So how much money are you gonna save by, sooner than later?
Well, the sooner it's built, the sooner you have to start maintaining it, too, so.
Yeah.
I don't think we wanna talk in circles all day right now about a building that's hypothetical in nature at the moment.
No, but it gives us a scope, you know, of how this all fits together with, with funding or bonding, so, that's helpful.
Yeah, I think I mentioned the CIP five hundred thousand, remember, I know, Doc, you were there. And they were a little, I thought it was a big number. And that's the number.
It feels like a big number, but.
Right, I understand, but, uh, we're just, they questioned it. And I, I understand, but.
Yeah.
Because I didn't know, because I don't, we knew what we, our size that we needed, and at the time, I think we were talking about a single story, it was just for, pretty much just for us, though. And it's developed into more, so.
If you want that, you can figure out what you're paying for.
Yeah, well, I didn't sell one of it. Should've kept my mouth shut.
Well, you can cover the whole two million anyway, whether we go over there or not, you know?
Yep.
Just because we have storage boxes, we can pay you rent.
Yeah, there you go.
What else for Dan? Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you.
We appreciate all your headaches.
Yeah.
Eye-opening, eh, gang? So much that, you know, we're only here together twice a month.
We gotta start talking about it.
We don't know what's, what's going on.
Yeah.
I, I don't mean that in a bad way, it's just, it's evolving, there's more to it than years ago.
Lots of big-ticket items on the radar.
Then if you just wanna do my budget, I'll leave at two thirty, so, you wanna do my budget first in the general fund. John lead in first, and I'll do my budget after you're done with the general.
I don't think there's much complicated about your budget, if you wanna just look at that cost center real quick.
Okay, so I guess I can, um, my salary's going up two and a half percent like everyone else, so, um, and the appointed official, um, the same, other than a two and a half percent, which is my deputy clerk. Um, the biggest change in my budget was when we took Kim out of it, the finance part of it, so that's why it's decreased by seventy thousand dollars. Um, but really, other than that, um, as far as the clerk's budget, there's really no changes in the clerk's budget. Um, elections budget, which is related, of course. Um, we're, we're budgeted for two elections, the August primary and the November midterm. Um, if Marquette Area Public Schools decides to have an election for, um, millage, that would be in May. And that would, we would front the money for that, for, through a budget amendment, and then we'd get reimbursed for the whole cost of that, so it's not gonna cost us anything if they decide to do that. I'm not sure as far as early voting, um, we got fairly reimbursed for that last time. I'm not sure what the state's doing this next time, so I'm thinking, hopefully, we get reimbursed for that again, but we'll cost share with Powell Township on that, so. And the election day, we eat, we eat that, so. Um, I guess any questions on the clerk's budget? Or any thoughts or any concerns, I guess? I'm not planning on going to the conference this next year, because we'll be busy, so I, I. Everyone okay?
Any questions from anybody?
Pretty straightforward, I mean, and Michelle will be part of that clerk's budget. She's, I got a third, what is it, like?
Forty percent.
Forty percent?
Yeah.
I got forty percent of her time, and she'll be busy next year, so. Elections, no, I think twenty percent.
Twenty.
Yeah, I got Michelle for twenty percent of, of her time in my budget, so. And I think Andrew is forty, I think.
Andrew's forty, and then.
General is.
General.
It's the rest.
Yeah, it's the rest, and I had mentioned to John about making its own cost center for the HR, so it.
And it should be, yeah, should be.
Great, yeah, good idea.
We seem to give her more work than we thought she needed.
That's okay, keeps her busy.
Yeah.
She likes that.
Well, I know she'll be busy next year, so as far as the clerks, I mean, this year, on the off-election year, there's really not much, other than keeping the QVF file updated, and that's really a once-a-week type thing. Next year, however, she'll be busy, I can tell that, she will be busy.
So is that percentage static, or is it changing every year?
No, it's, every year it's the same.
Yeah, in the beginning, we were gonna, before she took on HR duties, we were gonna fluctuate between years, too. But then we kinda just came up with a forty, forty, twenty to cover.
Balance it out.
Yeah.
It's probably a pretty good average.
Yeah.
Considering election years, it will be clerk-heavy, non-election years will probably, probably be the opposite, or maybe a little more HR, uh, I can tell you, anytime it comes to policies, she's. So.
Okay, clerk's budget should be, I guess if you got any questions, just don't hesitate. Don't hesitate to contact me or catch me, and I hope they can explain it for you better. Do Andrew's budget next.
Well, why don't you start, John?
Okay. Um, before we get into general fund, I just wanna talk real quick about the miscellaneous info at the front. We talked gloom and doom about all the potential debt coming our way. Um, the majority of that will be specific to water utility customers, so it won't impact everybody. But it's also distributed amongst a smaller percentage of, of the township, so it, it can sound a little scary. The good news is, we're down to relatively little debt.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Um, you can see that, uh, DWRF loan for the water system, that final payment is paid.
Yeah, already paid, paid and subdubbed.
So we're down to three columns of debt. We had been at five or six a couple of years ago, two of them were paid off early. We now have the refunding bonds, which are for this building, Fire Hall, and DPW, we refinanced all those mortgages with bonds. That was, uh, earlier this year, and those will expire in twenty thirty-five.
It was ten years, so, yeah.
And we're making what you would consider, what I would consider to be an extra payment this year, because we already made the mortgage payments earlier in the year, refinanced, and now we're making a bond payment also this year. So it's a one-time sort of double whammy, but that helps us terminate that debt ten years from when the bonds were sold. Uh, and then it's the roads, twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen millages, and if I remember right, those were fifteen-year.
I believe so, yes.
Bonds. And by the time we get to the end of those, we're going to be talking about doing it all over again and probably at a higher rate. Because the roads are not improving, they just keep aging. Fingers crossed, let's hope the, um, roads funding is in a little better shape. State made a significant change this year, which impacted every community. From a revenue sharing perspective, I'd say we got off pretty easy. Um, what was originally going to be almost a two percent increase in revenue sharing ends up becoming a two percent decrease, which is not terrible. That's from, from the fiscal year twenty twenty-five to fiscal year twenty twenty-six. So instead of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, which was originally projected in the May consensus, we are looking more like, well, there's two different numbers, depending on if you use the House Fiscal Agency or Treasury, four hundred and forty thousand, or four thirty-eight, something like that, and I budgeted less than that. So, just because, there's been four different numbers since May on what one line item of revenue will look like in our budget. And I budgeted quite a bit lower, I think we're safe from that perspective. But anyway, from a debt perspective, general fund-related, I think we're in pretty good shape. Uh, two of those three lines are funded almost entirely by millage revenue. Um, there is some general fund subsidization, because the debt payments exceed the revenue on an annual basis. Um, and I'm actually hoping we can jump to township improvements real quick, just so I. And I'm actually hoping we can jump to township improvements real quick, just so I can highlight that for you. You'll see there's two line items of revenue. The first one is other revenue, that's actually the millage. And Kim's working with the auditor to get that to show up as tax, roads, millage, instead of other revenue. So we took that four hundred and eighty-four thousand that was normally showing up in the first line of the budget, and then the current year, we made it its own line in the general fund budget. Kim has to do three entries. If the money goes to the general fund, then you transfer it to public improvements to pay the debt. This way, it's one. So we put the revenue right into the fund where it's being spent. The check still comes from the same place, the money still comes from the same place, it's less journal entries. She hates journal entries.
Yeah.
I'm just waiting for confirmation.
So then, the second line is a hundred and ten thousand of transfer from the general fund. But you'll see down below, we have approximately five hundred and seven thousand, six hundred dollars in debt payments. Five oh seven versus four eighty-four, do the math. So part of that transfer, let's call it twenty-four thousand, is going directly to subsidize the debt payment. The remaining eighty-six thousand is what we have left to spend on roads next year. And I've got a seventy-five thousand dollar preliminary budget from the road commission to do the roads we wanna do, which is several roads, including Moran. It would be chip sealing with a fog seal over the top. And I'm gonna tell you with caution, there's some people that aren't gonna like chip sealing in Trowbridge, but the idea is you put an additional seal over the top to really lock that stone in, and you don't end up with as much of a mess. It's a little bit smoother surface, it'll actually look more like a fresh layer of asphalt. So, if we don't do that, the cost per mile jumps times four. It's the most affordable surface treatment we can do, over the length of a roadway. And we have to do it if we're going to continue to do road maintenance. So anyway, that's really where, oh, seventy-five thousand, that leaves eleven thousand left over, if you're doing the math, in that eighty-six and change. The DDA has decided they want to replace their street name signs and fund them, the ones that are in the DDA. But they would also like the township to do it township-wide, so it's consistent. We might be able to do most of the township with that remaining ten to eleven thousand, but that's up to you, if that's a priority or not. There's plenty of other things that we should be concerned about, including let's just say up to fifteen million in capital projects for next year, right? So, is that ten grand better off being spent later, or not? There's some merit to having consistent street name signs throughout the township, so, and that's a relatively small part of money.
And we do have some money in the street sign budget that we haven't spent, right, Lynn?
Well, it's in, it's in the fund balance, I don't think we earmark it, because some years we spend it, some years we don't, and it's fifteen hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, I'd asked to put the fifteen hundred that we didn't spend in when Pete was here, so we had three grand, then it still didn't get spent. So.
We've been spending money on street signs, but we just buy inventory every other year or so, of the signs that we replaced out in the field, we get another one to hang in the garage until we need it. So it's not like we're not spending it, we just can't we can't just spend fifteen hundred or three thousand dollars and do anything more significant than what we're currently doing. So, if you wanted to earmark some of the fund balance to something like that, I think that's fine. But this is also an opportunity to do the same thing in one budget, through the township improvements fund.
So do you suppose the DDA is gonna go ahead with, I mean, it depends on what they decide, I guess, with, with theirs? And then come to us and ask to do it more economically and do all the signs at once, or are they just gonna go ahead?
I wouldn't be surprised if the chair of the DDA shows up at your next meeting and requests it.
I actually thought he'd be there.
He's not bashful, he's probably working today.
Okay. Where does the, how does that fit in with the, um, roundabouts, they were kinda talking about doing something with them, taking on that responsibility.
The street name signs have nothing to do with the roundabouts, the roundabouts would be funded completely separately, but from their millage revenue.
Okay. Okay, anything not clear on that? Okay, I'll go back.
Before I go any further, there's a couple of other small budgets in here that I think we can knock out pretty quick. And will also help you understand the general fund a little better, because there's, again, money's coming into a fund transferred over, because that's where it's paid out of, um, and we're still cleaning those up. So, library fund is money in, money out, whatever we collect, we distribute directly to the library. I don't know that there's much there, other than arguing over whether it should be two ninety-two versus two ninety-one or two ninety-three from a tax revenue perspective. The rest of them are, uh, running average conservative numbers, and whatever we collect, we send to them. It's pretty basic, that's done through the treasurer's office. So it's collected on the tax bills, um, the amount that's under the library millage gets distributed directly to the library, along with any, um, Commercial Forest Act share, which is peanuts, and then local community, community stabilization share. DDA fund, did we talk about this at the board yet? It's been recommended for approval by the DDA. And you'll see they collect about a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year on that one mil of revenue. A little bit of interest for money they've had in the bank that they intended to spend a couple of years ago, but their big project has just been delayed, it's bureaucratic process, because there's grant money involved. You have to meet all the requirements before you can even put it up to bid and build it, so that will finally happen next year. And that's why you're seeing other revenue of a hundred and ten thousand, that's taking money out of the fund balance. And twenty-five thousand from the general fund. Because that's what the board committed to that project when they were underfunded on the total local, um, match on that. So, contracted services, two nineteen-three. I think that's where you're going to see the street name signs and the roundabout maintenance, as well as the local match on I shouldn't say I think, I know, on that, uh, tap grant project, which is the pathway on commerce from Warner to the highway, and on Old Wright Street from Venture to the highway. Actually, it's from Old Venture to the highway. Since Venture is now re, realigned, and should be open in the next week or two.
So will that go through that, um, property that's owned, if it's Old Venture to the highway?
It's parallel to Old Wright Street. From the intersection of Old Venture all the way up to the highway, because there is nothing there currently.
And the new, my understanding is this new whatever built is not gonna have a pathway on it.
Correct, Michigan Veteran Homes went straight to safer outs to school program, and convinced them to let it build a sidewalk across their property in lieu of the side path we had before.
So there will be a connector?
There will be a connector, I don't know who's maintaining it.
Well, it's their property.
We don't have equipment narrow enough to plow or snow blow a four foot wide sidewalk, or five.
But it's their property, so.
Correct, so we're gonna have to see how that goes. This is the way the state works, they pretty much tell us what's gonna happen.
Maybe they'll give us one.
I mean, I, I think everyone's happy that the project is coming, there's little details like that, that really didn't meet the local agency's expectations.
Because we weren't involved, really.
We didn't have a.
We weren't asked.
We asked for it, we actually asked for it, but it was a cost that was significant enough for them to, I guess, go over our heads on. So anyway, that leads to a break even in that budget. The last one is metro authority, and really what we get is some right-of-way fees, and that's basically per mile of right-of-way, and it's interesting, because we don't own any roads. So, I'm not sure why we actually get it, other than that it's within the corporate limits of the township. I'm not saying it should go away. But it's interesting that we get it. And really what that's doing is funding depreciation on the loader we bought, uh, four or five years ago. So, if nothing else, it's, it's doing a good thing, and as we're funding that depreciation, when it's time to replace it, and hopefully thirty years, we'll have the money sitting in the bank to do it again. Okay? That one's not tied to the general fund at all. So now going back to the general fund, um, if you've had a chance to read my memo, I think the, the budget is pretty straightforward. Aside from how we're demonstrating certain revenues individually now, instead of what used to be combined, and it's that very first line and the of taxes in the revenue. When I started doing the budget, it was a combination of operating millage, road millage, and law enforcement millage. And then, at these meetings, we have to tell you what each one of those were, so you could add them up and make sure the line matched. Now, we're putting the road millage directly into township improvements. And this is two changes, by the way, in two years, just if you're getting confused. The law enforcement millage is now shown separately, so you can compare that to what we pay the sheriff's department. That'll tell you what, what you're paying versus what it costs. And the general fund always paid for the first forty-hour shift, the millage is supposed to be paying for the second forty-hour shift, okay? So those are all shown individually now, instead of three numbers combined into one. Uh, the road tax revenues, as I already said, were separated and put directly into township improvements. Law enforcement taxes are shown separate. Marijuana tax revenue, we never really truly know what we're going to get, so I started this process again by showing half of what we would get at both licensed facilities in the township remain operational, and excise tax revenue stays about the same at the state level. I will say that if you've been paying attention, it seems like that market's sort of settling back down. I know there's at least two licensed facilities in the city that have closed in the past year. I don't see a particular heavy volume at either of our licensed facilities any given day when I drive by. So who knows if either of those will last forever.
Probably not, I mean.
Yeah, Menominee's, um, doing pretty well, until Wisconsin legalizes marijuana, and then they'll be in the same boat as everybody else. I would guess it's the same along the southern border of the Lower Peninsula. State revenue sharing, as I said, that's the big, the big volatile one, where they took away the, it's, it's essentially township, cities, and villages used to get a percentage of the sales tax revenue on fuel. That sales tax revenue was changed to a motor fuel tax, so there's no longer that revenue to pay schools and municipalities. Our, end up, loss ends up being somewhere around ten thousand, okay? And the number I budgeted is significantly less than that, which means we're in a conservative revenue, um, situation. Interest revenues, we know those are going down, I think there's, uh, rate cut coming from the Fed soon, and really it's our investments, every time we reinvest CDs, the interest rate's been a little bit lower than the last time, we had a couple of really good years, we're gonna start seeing some leaner years on interest revenues. Transfers in, this is a little bit different, and I show it as revenues, because the money has to get to the general fund somehow. And that's the bond payments for the, um, refunding bonds on the three buildings. So the fire department was making an eighty thousand dollar annual transfer to the general fund for the original mortgage, because it was Township Hall and Fire Hall combined. Now all three buildings are combined, so there's also transfers coming from water and wastewater to pay for their shares of the building debt payment. And those are the last ones in the, uh, the last lines in the, um, transfers in. The good news is, the refinancing actually reduced the debt payments for all three facilities on an annual basis, and I think everyone's pretty happy about that, with no balloons to worry about. So, um, that twenty-five thousand dollar transfer in from the fund balances to help fund that DDA project that the board committed to, I'm gonna say it was two years ago, but it could've been three already. So, the net effect in the general fund is that twenty-five thousand dollars. If it actually gets transferred to the DDA, Kim will have to create a new line in the revenues for transfer to DDA fund to pay that portion. Does that make sense to everybody? But right now, it's showing up as net effect. And that's a transfer of twenty-five thousand from the fund balance, so it's been sitting there, waiting for this project to happen. Other big assumptions made. Wages, two and a half percent increase, health insurance, a ten percent increase, actual, we know now is nine point one, so we're safe there. Still, kind of a big number, and at some point, it's going to become a bigger deal than it is already. Especially as we consider adding more full-time staff. Health insurance or healthcare is not affordable for anyone at this point, in my opinion. And it could get worse for those that are, um, what is it, in the portal? So, okay. There's some minor adjustments up and down throughout the budget, some of them are based on a running average, some of them are based on a trend. Planning and zoning and assessing each other, ten thousand dollar part-time wage line shown, that's for that, um, code enforcement person we were talking about, that would also help with assessing fieldwork, verifying what's actually happening out there, doing measurements, that kind of thing.
Where does that stand right now?
It's currently not being acted on, because we didn't properly have it budgeted. And at the time, we were going to hire somebody, the people that had to train were both out of the office on extended leave. So it didn't make sense. Now it's up to you to decide if you really want to go forward with this or not, and I'll tell you, there's two options. One, you do nothing and ask existing staff to do that work. Or two, you hire a part-timer that can do it. Kind of on an as-needed basis. The first option, the challenge is, you can't just send office staff out in the field if they have higher priorities, so you have to be more flexible on schedule. They can do some of that work, but not when they're busy dealing with site plan reviews, or order reviews, season, or that kind of thing, right?
Just preparing for planning commission meetings, too.
Whatever, yeah. So there, there's two schools of thought, you could really just put the onus on the people that we already have, and know that it has to be more flexible with the schedule. I think the biggest thing is, we just need to make it a priority for them, and then see how it goes, or you just hire somebody to help them and do it right away. One or the other, the budget allows for either option.
So we don't have to decide that today?
As long as you don't wanna change. As long as you don't wanna change that budget.
So it's ten thousand dollars is sitting there?
In, in two cost centers. Planning and zoning has ten and assessing has ten.
Alright, so maybe the planning commission needs to relook at that whole thing?
Yeah, but the board has to decide too. This is a township-wide.
Correct. Right, so our.
Multiple township-wide issues.
So our customers, our, our cus- not our patients, but our customers, um, they don't, they're not happy with the mess up there. And if the people who can do it currently in the office, it's not, I'm not gonna say it's not their priority, but there's other priorities higher. We're not addressing the needs of our customers. Is that, is that?
I wouldn't say that's accurate, but those same people have a perception that they don't need to notify anyone of the problem they have.
Right.
And we rely very heavily on complaints that are lodged at township hall.
So I'll, I'll, I'll address that because I talked to someone on the street today, cuz I was walking while I was out, outside. Anyways. They um, they're not real sure about who to call. So I said who to call, but the problem is calling on the phone is not the easiest thing to do, and I still think that we need to create an electronic system where I can just go in, it gets timestamped. The name of the person entering the issue is, goes right in there, their address, all that stuff gets in there.
Most of them don't wanna give their personal info though, either. That's part of the problem.
Well.
They don't want their neighbors to know they're ratting on them.
But it's on the phone. And, and the information still gets to someone.
They don't have to give their name.
I'm, I'm just being.
They have to give their name when they call on the phone.
Why?
Well, because that Jason and Eric asked for their name.
Doesn't mean they have to give it.
Yeah.
Oh, well, you can probably do that in the timestamp thing too.
I don't disagree. We just don't have the expertise on staff to do webpage fill-in-the-blank type things.
Well, then we, well, so then we hire it up.
If that's what the board wants to do, I have no problem doing whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I do, and you know, maybe it's not possible, but it just seems that the simpler we can make it for people to do things. The other thing is people don't know what the rule is. So they're not going online and saying, oh, here's the ordinance about junk cars, I'll just say. They, they don't know. I mean, they just keep gathering stuff in their yards. So do we need to do a campaign like we've done for recycling and tell people these things are not allowed? I mean, the back of the calendar, do we need to start doing, you're not allowed to have this and this and this in your yard?
Not a bad idea, especially now that we have new light ordinance.
Yeah, or you know, do I need to print the blight ordinance and go walk around and post it? Do we need to make a poster about it? I, I mean, you know, somewhere we have to provide that education to the people in our community. They don't know.
I think if we took the back of the calendar one month to do that every now and then, it'd probably be a good idea. Um, at least addressing the big things like piles of, of old tires, their mosquito magnets. Junk cars, you're allowed to have one unregistered vehicle. I think that's an example.
Snowmobiles, trailers. I can't believe all this stuff in my neighborhood. People are just like, I don't know what they're doing.
Well, we've also gotta kind of have an inventory, whether we hire somebody or have our staff do it, of where they're gonna go. And have a plan in place. If we start notifying people what they can't have, say, you know, within so many days, you might be contacted. Or, I mean, you can't just throw these things out and expect people to say, oh, my gosh, I can't do this. I'm gonna get rid of this car, cuz they're not gonna do it. I had one in my neighborhood for five years until Jason went after him, or Eric. They don't, they're not gonna do anything.
Don't you think some people will?
No.
Well, then we need to go out.
If they have the mindset to keep trash and, and storage vehicles and stuff like that, they're, they're mowing around cars. And these trailers and stuff.
Yeah, so maybe it's just something that we need to put on our priority list or goals or.
But we still need to kind of have, somebody's gotta run through and say, so we have an overall idea of addresses. Cuz, and then maybe put them on some kind of a.
Sounds to me like we need to hire somebody if we're doing an inventory.
Yeah, I mean, cuz how do you choose where to go next by the complaints? If that's what we wanna do, that's alright.
Or when it was called in, which is the whole timestamp concept.
Yeah, maybe.
Your first, your second.
But there's gotta be some kind of a plan.
We're talking about two line items in the budget right now. You definitely don't have to figure it out right now. But if you do want to, that's fine. I'm here till four-thirty. I'm just saying.
Or we can just leave it, right?
Well, it was a big thing for the planning commission to go through and do the ordinance, and we've already had one case. We've had two actions done. So I mean, we can't just stop.
I'm not dismissing the need to follow through. I'm giving you options.
Exactly.
And both of them are eight, you're able to follow through with, with this budget.
Well, if nothing else, current staff could get it organized maybe because they know it best. And if you're gonna hire somebody, you can't just say, okay, go out there and take care of this. There, there has to be some kind of a plan. And.
I don't disagree. The plan, I think, has been lacking, and that's why we couldn't hire somebody when there was nobody here to train them. We didn't even have here's your checklist or punch list or.
Right, so if staff starts with. So how would you wanna see, and we don't need to dwell on this, but how would you wanna see us direct you to start this process? What, what works for you?
You can't make a decision today.
Right.
But if you want to hire somebody that's specifically tasked with these duties, at a public, regularly scheduled or special meeting, authorize staff to move forward with the hiring of this person early next year. So that when the leaves are still off the trees and most of the snow is gone, they can go and make easy observations from the public right of way on most properties.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah, and someone will write a job description and it will.
We already have that. We did interviews.
Oh, okay.
But things just kind of fell apart right at the, right when we were at a point of deciding if we offer somebody the job. There are some challenges in that even though it's a part-time job, the expectation is to make a whole bunch of money doing it.
Oh, sure.
So we have to figure that part out because I don't think our, our, the wage we were offering was adequate, and we, we determined that based on our classification system, so.
Can we use an intern too? I don't know necessarily how those work, but is that something we could look at?
We can look at any option the board wants. Intern's gonna be challenging for a part-time.
That's what I don't know, yeah.
Yeah. And they're young. Usually.
Yeah, and there's potential um, conflict with this type of position too.
Yeah.
So it's gonna have to be somebody that's fairly mature and understands private property laws and that kind of thing.
That's why we were kind of looking at a police retired or something in the beginning.
Ideally, it would be someone like that, but none of them applied, so.
Well, that's why we hired Eric, because he had kind of the background.
Before we talked about that, yes.
The intention originally, yeah. Okay, we can swing back around unless you got something else.
I didn't know asking that one simple question would take it that far, but I, I learned a lot from it. Thank you.
Like I said, two line items in the budget, and they might be the most important ones. I never know coming into these meetings which one's gonna be most important. I try to give you a budget that makes sense and hope that you agree. So um, law enforcement is shown a little bit differently this year as well. And I don't want you to get confused because we have two different ten thousand dollar items. One which is clearly shown, and that's to maintain the vehicle that we buy them, which we're already doing, but it's always been shown under just the contract number. Now we're breaking it out separately because I want Kim to track it separate from what we're paying for the eighty hours a week. And by the way, they should be at the next meeting, give you an update as well as talk about next year's contract. But the contract hourly rate that we received from them for next year is sixty-three dollars and thirty-two cents an hour, which comes out to about two sixty-five. And that, that's covering wages. It's not just wages. It's wages, benefits, overhead costs.
Equipment.
That's, it's, you're, you have to picture everything involved. We're not just paying for an officer to show up. So.
Kind of paying for an employee.
Well, yeah, but wages and benefits for one full-time employee at sixty-three thirty-two, that's actually the bargain.
Yeah. So that's kind of how we are.
Yep. And last year, where's my other binder?
One minute. We'll go back to hiring our own.
Oh, no. That wasn't what I meant.
No, I'm just saying it, sixty-three dollars an hour for wages and benefits and a lot of, and we're paying for the patrol car. What other expenses are there if we had our own employees?
Oh, well, there's education, there's probably.
You need a chief, you need an administrator. Just the paperwork alone, we don't wanna touch it.
Okay.
My opinion.
Well, it just seemed like a, a high, I understand wages and benefits and everything else.
But this is uniform and equipment and, I mean, this is everything. We don't have to do anything other than the car. There's no building.
Rent-a-cop.
No supervisor.
Rent-a-cop.
No phones, nothing. We don't have to do anything.
Yeah.
I know we, we went to right, to a quick dead end when we tried that.
Unfortunately, I didn't put the hourly rate for the current year in my memo last year. I apologize for that. It's, it's not much different.
It's in the contract.
I'm sure their wages are going up and their benefit costs are going up.
Absolutely.
And they're having a hard time hiring people.
Well, part of that is, is why we see different patrol officers assigned to us almost monthly because they have people coming and going, and every time they do that, they get to post for a new position and um, some people really like being here, some people don't. I mean, do you like a busy commercial area with a relatively dense population? Or do you like being out in Michigami?
Yeah.
I mean, very rural. Occasional, you'll, occasionally you'll pull over somebody on the highway that's going sixty-seven or something, you know? Yeah, there's other things that happen, but it is relatively busy here for a township. So anyway, do I advise considering getting our own law enforcement with all the other issues we have right now? I don't think we can afford it.
No.
We, we.
I, we agree on that. Okay, thank you. We're in a good place. CIP. When I put this budget together, the CIP had not been considered by the board yet, but I can tell you the items that were in the CIP this year can be accommodated in this budget, and we actually pretty much are, as well as a couple of other things. And the reason why is most items in that CIP are fire department-related for next year. Computer equipment. Um, we just upgraded our switches, our server, and all of our devices have been upgraded to Windows eleven. We're in pretty good shape for next year, so the big spending is behind us for the next, call it, four or five years. Hopefully. So we're budgeting ten grand. That allows us to um, tackle anything that comes up throughout the year, replace any more computers that maybe die prematurely. And we're gonna try to budget that much every year so that we have money earmarked. So yes, we do try to do some of that. Um, building and grounds, there's, that wasn't for anything specific. So that can be reassigned to anything that comes up between now and the end of next year, if you choose to leave that in there. Police vehicle fifteen thousand again, and on that line item, be aware that the sheriff's department doesn't think we have to replace it next year.
So, so I'll, 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 I'll be the supporter of, we budgeted to replace it. I think I, I would be supportive of replacing it even if they don't think so. We have that rotation going, and that will then rotate a, a vehicle into our rotation, which is probably better, a better vehicle to service our staff and our board than that charger thing.
Be in it.
And I, I think that if you start doing that, you're gonna fall behind again. And so I'm a big supporter. If we budget it, we have the money. We should buy it. It's gonna cost more money next year. And the second used car we're gonna sell, or what, third or fourth or whatever one it is, um, used cars are going for a good price right now.
Well, it's interesting you say that. I can give you some arguments that completely validate what you just said, and then some clarification. First of all, if we're hiring a part-time employee to do code enforcement fieldwork, um, assessing fieldwork, they need a.
Four-wheel drive.
Four-wheel drive with adequate clearance to get to all of the rural parts of the county. Forestville is one of the primary examples where that charger, you're only going so far. And then you pretty much have to stop and walk. And that was actually part of the reason why we chose to go to the Tahoe this time, is so we could get that into our fleet.
Which we tried to do before, but that didn't happen, did it?
Yeah, there was an oops somewhere in there.
Yeah, it was oops with a certain person, but we won't mention any names.
Anyway, I, I wanted you to be aware that they did say we don't have to. My opinion is I agree with Trusty Winslow. I think we should for the specific reason that we were anticipating getting that vehicle into our fleet. Now, here's the other thing. When we get that vehicle from the sheriff's department, we've been hasty to unload the one that we had. Last time, the one that we had, we sent it to the fire department, and I think they're ha- pretty happy with it. It's been relatively low maintenance for them. Uh, the one that we got from them two and a half years ago, it had a new motor put in a in it at forty thousand miles, and I think it's around sixty-five now. I think we're going into a phase, at least in the next year or so, where having a second one for township hall only is going to be necessary. If we have these booster station projects going on, Lenny's gonna be going back and forth quite a bit. Um, we never replaced the Jeep that Kirk used to use for that kind of work, and I've told him, you need to be considering that, but if we get the Tahoe in and still have a car, he said that's adequate. So we don't have to go and buy a small SUV or whatever for Lenny to do his job. Maybe it'll save a little bit on the burden with the water projects we're doing because he's not spending that money on a vehicle. Right? So I think there's merit in doing that and keeping both of them here at least for a year or two until we determine we can go back to one vehicle again. And by then, who knows? We might need two all the time. The cost to insure the extra vehicle is relatively painless because we're based on a number of vehicles, and until we hit that threshold, the cost doesn't go up, so we should be safe there. And I'm meeting with him later this week maybe, so.
Well, and to have, assessing have a vehicle to do their twenty percent every year whenever they can get out.
Let's just be clear, we're not assigning a vehicle to any department of this building.
No, but I mean.
We're having options for them to use.
Have it available, right.
And just like Aunt Lenny, uh, he wouldn't be assigned to either one either. It's just there'd be more options available. And nobody can use the excuse, we don't have a vehicle to use.
Well, and we have the calendar set up, so if everybody looks at that one, it's, you know, clocked out, you know, you can tell when it's gonna be used.
Yeah, we all have to work on that for sure. It's.
Do we know how many miles are on the Tahoe?
Well, he told me. Um, but it's lower than the anticipated hundred thousand miles when we're supposed to get it back. And they didn't think they'd hit a hundred thousand next year.
I like Linda's idea.
The old contract had a limit of eighty thousand, so it's not that far off of where we have been before.
It's a nice vehicle.
Yeah.
It, it's got a lot of life left in it, so I think that would be great for our needs in the future.
Do we buy the same kind of vehicle? For the new?
That's up to us.
Yeah.
That's up to us, and we let that.
Oh, that's up to, oh, that's right, because of that issue, yeah.
It's interesting, if you talk to the various officers that have served us over the past years, some of them prefer the car, some prefer the SUV. It just depends on what kind of patrolling they do. Um, a car is much more nimble. Lower to the ground, you can maybe turn around and go catch somebody quicker, but it's supposed to be a community policing vehicle anyway, right? But it's supposed to be a community policing vehicle anyway, right?
Right, yeah.
And some of them want to be stealthy and some of them want to be a little more ostentatious. It's kind of funny.
Yeah, well, and some of it has to do with the fact that they have to wash their own patrol vehicle. Which one is looks dirty quicker, black or white? And last I heard, it was black, but and then we bought a white one and all the rest of them they bought were black.
Couldn't get a black one. Remember that?
That was probably two rounds ago, but yeah.
Both rounds, couldn't get a black one after the sheriff told us.
Well, I think if we let them know on November fifth that we do want to replace it next year, early summer, they'll try to do what they can to get one in stock that meets our expectations. It'll be a little time for them to get equipped radios and that kind of stuff, but. Okay, so the last one, equipment for recreation. There's fifty thousand in there. I'm not su- nope, 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 nope. Sorry, I'm confusing two lines. Fifty thousand is equipment that can be realigned for other CIP projects. And the reason why is you allowed building and grounds to buy the dump truck off of Fox Marquette Chevy's lot this year when it was going to be next year's purchase. Fifty wouldn't have been enough actually, but that's okay because we don't actually need it for next year. So that money can be used on other CIP projects if something comes up, right? So we're we're pretty good shape financially as far as funding anything CIP in our normal range for twenty twenty-six. The last one is recreation and I want want to be clear, there's two projects there. One is upgrading some of the smaller elements at the playground at Lyons Field and the second one is landscaping between the west edge of the tennis court and the pathway that runs from Cherry Street to the pavilion. That pathway is asphalt, it's all wavy and then it kind of drops down to the tennis court. So all the water drains onto the court and it gets stuck there. So we need to do some improvements around the edges, maybe replace that asphalt with concrete and then grade things out nice so that there's a nice transition from the sidewalk coming from the road down onto the court. And then safely also to the pavilion, so. I think we've got enough money to do every, there was seventy-five hundred that Lenny had put in his CIP request for the playground equipment and then the rest would be landscaping.
And and just to kind of think for the future, that playground is probably fifteen years old and we don't want it to to fall apart. So in my mind, I think we need to kind of create a plan for the playground for the future. So what we need to replace annually, what we need to do in that area and be on top of it and I don't know if you.
Start your marking fifty thousand a year for a proper replacement?
No, I don't know if you.
The fifty right here you could do for next year.
Yeah, I don't know if you hire, I mean, I'm sure you hire someone who comes in and looks at it and gives us a recommendation, but I'm not sure if anyone's been to the playground in Lower Harbor. But you know, that was a long time coming and you there's lots of money that went into that playground and again, I'd rather be ahead of it. It's a well-used playground in Marquette Township. It's one of the top ones on my grandchildren's list. Okay, so we want it to stay there. We like the people. We like the area and it's safe and, yeah, so I think we need to be on top of that.
And with that playground equipment, when it's those jungle gym type of, you can't just say, oh, that part's wearing out, let's replace it because by the time it gets to that point, they don't make it anymore. So you have to pretty much start over. So, yeah, and they're not cheap. The one in the city was built with donations.
Right.
Do we have the kind of ability to do that kind of effort? I know I know there was significant effort on the tunnel project, but will we have the same amount of passion for a playground? I I can't, I wasn't here yet when that tunnel project was happening.
That was all Mike Springer. He went door to door. So maybe the rec committee could start. That might be a good, you know, to have them do an inventory, figure out how long this equipment's been there, what might have to be replaced in five years or ten or give them the charge to make a recommendation and or maybe.
Be curious of anyone on that committee. Maybe. I don't want to speak out of turn. It's it's a different.
The makeup of the people is different than it may be.
Well, then.
For to talk about playgrounds, yeah.
They'll be out of their comfort zone. They can do something different. That's their charge is to take care of the recreation, you know?
Well, it's limited, but yeah.
But they have staff's help.
So what about the trailhead? Are they needing any? I mean, you know what, that's all Lenny had, right? And the part the recreation committee didn't bring anything forward?
No. I mean, they still want the roof over the ice rink, which I think everyone understands, but that's not going to happen next year. So that's still out there for sure and I think there's a lot of desire to see a pickleball facility that's not in a residential neighborhood. That starts with property which we don't currently have, so I'm not out looking for property for the township to buy right now. It's just not, I don't think it's a priority at the moment.
And the trailhead doesn't need anything other than a bathroom?
At some point, they will need site amenities, yes, because we paid for a porta-pot this summer. It worked, it was enough. We didn't really hear significant complaints. The last thing we have to try to get done before winter is power to the building. The conduit and power cable from the pole drop to the building is run. There needs to be a repair made to that from when we did our parking lot project. The drop has to be connected with DLP and run the power to a panel and then NTN does the inter- interior interior electrical work from there. So, yeah, I I think we're pretty much set there. The the final electrical costs probably weren't budgeted for this year, but we'll figure out how to pay for that. Right now, one of our electricians says not till January. We're trying to find one that can do it sooner.
Well, if we if we have fifty thousand in CIP excess.
Well, that's for next year though, not this year.
Oh, you want to do it right away? Okay.
NTN would like to have power in there for when they start storing their snow machines that they use for grooming the soap, snow bike roll. Transfers, I think we already talked about that. We're we're paying debt payments from the general fund by transferring money from the fire fund, wa- water fund, wastewater fund into the general fund along with the general fund paying its share. And the bond payments get paid. That's it.
I'm very glad you can keep track of all that shit.
You think I do it all?
And our trasher.
What a team.
I think we actually have a pretty good team. I mean, we all figure out where our strengths are and try to help each other out.
You're lucky.
Pretty blessed.
Good time to stop. We've been here a couple hours.
I got plenty to keep me busy from here on out.
We'll be back tomorrow.
Yep.
Everybody?
Hopefully.
I won't be able to be here tomorrow. I've got to go down for my wife's last audit, quite in my hope.
Well, if you have something you want to talk about or anything really jumped out at you?
No, not really.
Okay, if you think of something. And we don't, we're not deciding, you know, today and tomorrow anyway.
These aren't like the budgets of the olden days either. I was explaining that to Doc a little bit.
There is no way to explain.
Anything else to talk about on the general fund other than to answer individual questions anyway, so.
We might be able to finish it up tomorrow. I mean, we did it in a day last year, didn't we? Wasn't that last year?
Yeah, on a Friday. I kind of liked one day, so maybe next time we can do one day on a Friday.
Well, it depends on people's schedules.
Right.
Thanks, Kim. And great job getting this all put together and the books.
We'll talk about that.
And the spreadsheet. Yeah, no, really.
Cause you put a lot of. Bring your old books.
Yep.
What?
Bring your old book.
We can recycle those for the next round.
Then I don't have to fill them out with the tabs.
Do you know where your book is?
I saw it a couple of years ago, so I gotta remember where I saw it.
Well, if you can find it, please.
Exactly where it is. I I do think I do. Positive.
All right, I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
What I'm hoping you will all hear out tomorrow is the amount of effort that Kim does when she downloads this from BSNA and then formats it to what you see in your binder. It's a couple of days' work of just making it look like we're used to seeing it. And it's not even the same, but it's as close as you can get it without spending days upon days. So, I mean, BSNA is actually really nice for us to prepare the budgets in, but we still have to understand the cost centers because it doesn't break it down by cost center and that's where all of Kim's work has to come in.
It runs everything together.
So you won't see a subtotal by cost center, see, oh, this chunk of account numbers, there's suddenly a hundred thousand dollar difference, why is that? You only get to see the total at the bottom. And that's what this is. Lynn and I sat down and went through it this way. I had to actually draw lines to show where each cost center was.
Yeah, highlight divvy up the departments. Yeah, she worked hard because she she has to dump that into a spreadsheet, then reformat it, check all the formulas, make sure it balances. It's not easy.
I hate when the formula changes.
So there's the other thing. If we download it from BSNA and make a change, she now has to change it in the spreadsheet and BSNA.
We didn't make any change?
So no changes, please. Just one stamp.
Well, lots of good discussion.
I will say though, Lenny and Dan understand, truly understand their budgets and they don't they don't try asking for something that they know isn't going to fly. And I hope I don't either. And when I do put money in places where I wasn't quite sure if we needed, I try to make sure you're aware of it, like the CIP, right? If there's a hundred thousand dollars left over when I'm done and confirm that everything looks good, where do I think we're going to spend money on the CIP next year is how I try to divide that up. It won't be perfect, but if nothing else, it's a placeholder for some money that, call it your play money.
Don't say that aloud.
No.
Too late.
No, there was. There was very, yeah, there was very little that I asked him about when we sat down and looked at. I think he did a great job with it, trying to guess where we're going to be with the state nonsense and.
This an easy process.
He does, he does. Well, and the department heads too.
Yeah, everybody.
It was.
It doesn't have to be complicated.
It was murderous. It was, one year was something like fourteen hours. We just, we just kept going.
That was just Republican works.
It was like four days.
So tell me about the county of Marquette, Marquette County, all the counties in Michigan are getting money from the state of Michigan for roads.
Yeah.
So how will that maybe hopefully impact our local road?
I think the jury's still out on that. The road commission's been particularly quietly.
Yeah.
And I think they're trying to figure out how they're going to prioritize that money because they have a list a mile long of things that they could spend it on. And I'm sure they don't want to spend it all on X project in year one and have every other township all upset that they didn't see a dime of this millions of new money that they're getting, right? I think it's going to be a process that we'll see unfold over the next several years because they're seeing a significant increase in twenty-six and then it's going up again in twenty-seven and I think it's because of that second part of the formulas from the twenty-four percent additional sales tax on marijuana, which we'll see if they actually follow through on that one.
I thought they couldn't do that.
That's going to go to court.
Yeah, it's it's in court.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a while.
So the whole thing is though, we lost money quote through.
About ten grand to the township, yep.
So the hope would be that everyone gets that money back in local road money because they're just taking money out of one pot and putting it in another pot. Now, how the county chooses to divvy that up. We might want to make sure that we let our county commissioner know what we feel about that.
I don't think they have a lot of choice. They just sit back and wait to see how much they get.
Well, no, but we might want to be on, you know, the priority to get selected. I mean, we won't be able to know how much is coming, but we certainly want the road commission to know.
They're getting the same kinds of projections I was getting regarding what our revenue from the state will be. They're going to budget according to that and probably conservatively, just like we do, and figure out what next projects make the most sense on the list of to-do things that they've they've had sitting there for years.
But we might.
Maybe we'll get lucky and it'll be Commerce Drive in year one.
Yeah, maybe, or some crazy whatever. Yeah. But if we don't say that, you know, that that's important to us, how will they know?
Right.
So we do need to go to the county road commission, but I don't want to go up there.
I go, I go every month.
We've been there before, right?
I suspect the two townships that don't have local road villages will probably remain the lowest priority.
I suspect that too. We always like matching, matchy-matchy things.
Yeah, and.
Help us pay.
They are allowed to ask for a match, but I don't know that they're allowed to require it. I think that might play a role in who can actually participate on a project to improve the priority. So if we said we have fifty thousand, would that help us get a project done quicker?
Maybe.
Maybe. It's it's a purely hypothetical thing, but.
Well, they cut kind of a five-year plan too, so they, you know, if we want something to be on their schedule, now's the time to let them know.
Right.
I mean, i- in every year. They want to know in the fall so they can plan for April.
We should do that. Maybe the road committee did that before. I don't know. Did they?
Sort of.
Sort of.
It's been done multiple different ways in my ti- short time here. When I arrived here, UP engineers and architects would take the PESR ratings and establish a list of priorities and we were paying them a fee. And the person that was doing that is Mark Davatilla, who's now the director of public works and city engineer for the city of Nagani. And we tried using them one more time and it didn't go as well as it had prior to that, in my opinion. So we changed it completely to, I think one year we even just asked for a price to do chip sealing. And then if that's accurate, the very next year or even the first year, we just bid it out through the road commission and they charged us an admin fee, which is it's either about the same or a little bit less than what we were paying the consultant and they're the road agency, so.
Well, certainly, you know, I would defer to you to see what works best, but but I do think if you're not a voice in their ear, that nothing's going to change. Or maybe something would change, but you know, it doesn't hurt to be a voice in someone's ear.
Yeah. Well, I think they're projected to see a four million dollar increase next year, which is not going very far. I mean, if they have two miles of really bad road, that's all you're going to see, maybe. Or they're going to spread it as far as they can. I'm not sure. I have no idea what their inventory looks like beyond the township, but I'm sure it's not great.
If you go to the next road commission meeting, please pass on a big thank you from me for their crew today. That was absolutely outstanding, right, John? They were fantastic. They they did everything that I I expected and more, right down to the cleanup afterwards. It was fantastic.
What would they working on?
They came and and dug my my pond out, which is, they have to do it, it's under contract to do that every year. And they went over and beyond digging. Is this, is this how we go, is it, are, is everything clean now? Are you satisfied? I mean, fantastic. They just, they were great.
Did they put down some shoulder gravel over on Miski?
I don't know where they're going next, but they were, they had another, they had half a day left.
Probably not that.
They had half a day left, yeah.
So Miski is one of the roads that I want to see chipped sealed next year. Before they do that, I'd like to see them put shoulder gravel down, especially between Werner and Yorke Street, which.
It drops, it drops right off there. But that's in the city too.
Well, not that side.
Well, it's the west side or east side's in the city. Miski is a divider.
Right. But from Werner to Right, but from Werner to, just before Ridge is in
My street, a portrait.
In the county's network.
Okay.
So the corner where Dave lives.
Yeah.
So it's like two short blocks of Miski are, kind of are, it's county-local, so our responsibility to do maintenance on it.
Remember a couple years ago when I went and did my own asphalt work?
Yeah, you were upset that I didn't do it for you and I don't know why.
I did it myself. You wanna get something done, you do it yourself. I went right out to the, to the batch plant, got the asphalt, and he said, what are you gonna put it in? I said, just a plastic tarp, he said, it's three hundred and some degrees. I said, well, let me rethink that. I got a, I had a bin that fit into my truck that was metal and he put it in there for me, I know, Ryan. He put it in there for me and I brought it, I did that corner and I did the one down on Bancroft and Woodridge. Every time I pull my border on those corners, there's a hole like this, the wheels kept dropping into it, I said, I'll fix that. I did, it's still there today too.
Anyway, I'm gonna ask them before, they are the ones that will actually do the chip seal and then Farner comes afterwards and does the fog over the top. I'm gonna ask them to do the shoulder gravel first, even if they say they need somebody to pay for the part on the city side, I'm gonna say, don't chip seal before the shoulder's done on both sides and we'll see if we can get the city to agree that.
We tried that a few years ago. But maybe that was a while ago. Yeah, would have been, because Randy approached them and said, we're gonna do, I think we did Werner then. And we're gonna go around or whatever, I don't remember exactly. And so I don't think Covax was there yet either. And they said, nope, we're not partnering, that's not in our plan. The next spring, they did it, they did their side, it was like, we could have saved so much money if we had just worked together.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes you have to make your side look nicer, so they're shamed into doing it.
Yeah, maybe, but the next year they did it, like
Maybe that's a whole different group in there, a few more.
I think there is.
It's hard to say, and for one short block of shoulder gravel, I mean, you're talking a couple thousand bucks maybe.
They got the equipment to do it.
Well, the road commission, if they're there with their shouldering machine to do whole sides of one block before you put a chip seal down, that chip seal, you can overspray a foot or so on each side and you're almost actually widening the road and that chip seal on, on fresh gravel will hold up pretty good.
And that's, that area right there is bad, where it comes from that wide portion of, of Miski down to Tulane, it's always
That's the spot where I'm glad you didn't go me over.
Carter always hit there, dug out.
That shoulder is such a bad drop off.
Make it wider, yeah, make it wider.
And the edge is crumbling away too, you got chunks like this breaking away.
That's too big of a project for Everson Contracting.
I suspected it would be, so know that it's on my agenda to ask them to do that before they chip seal.
Okay.
Should we call it?
Yeah.
Three thirteen?
Do it.
Okay, we'll be back tomorrow.
If you have any surprises you wanna spring on me in the general